So be sure to check out our calendar of events on the website for up-to-date information. Great things happening. Please place your offering in the black box on the wall, or you can mail it to our church, or you can use our secure online giving option as well. Thank you for your generosity. Kingdom Kids will be happening during the 11:00 AM church service. Kids five to 12, please follow Pastor Jonathan today. Also, continue to join us Wednesday nights at 6:30. We've got adult Bible study, we've got Atmos Youth, Kingdom Kids, something for all ages in the middle of the week. Wednesdays at 6:30. This Tuesday is a special day for us, isn't it? It's our election day. Some of you have voted already. If you haven't yet, or if you're interested, we have a voter's guide there at the welcome center, and we want to let you know that Tuesday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, our sanctuary here is open for anyone to come and pray to the good Lord for His mercy and His direction and His favor on our community and our election. But good things happening, and we just want you to know this place is available for you on Tuesday. So many events being canceled this year, but thank God that things with our kids and our youth are still happening. Did you know that Atmos Youth are going to the Pictured Rocks on Friday night, November 13th, until Saturday, November 14th, and there's still room for you if you want to be a part of that? Please see Pastor Jonathan after church today. Something fun to look forward to. Also, in a few weeks, Sunday, November 15th, we are having Mid-Michigan Teen Challenge come to church. How many of you love Teen Challenge? We love Teen Challenge. These are people who have wonderful overcoming stories. It's a great day to invite family and friends to join us. And we are having a coat collection. We did this last year. We're doing it again this year, the next few weeks, for our warmth ministry. And coats will be given away after our food pantry time, during our food pantry time on November 15th. If you have any coats that you'd like to give away that are in good condition, please wash them at home if you can, and bring them by this week or next week, drop them there in the box in the foyer, and that would be a big blessing. Well, this year Walk Through Bethlehem is actually Drive Through Bethlehem, and I'm so glad it's still happening. This year it will be on two nights, December 19th and 20th, and we're going to use some property on the corner of Clare Avenue and Colenville, just north of the Overpass. We'll be setting up various tents and sharing the good news of Christ's birth. We love this tradition. We need all of you. We need all of you to pitch in in one way or another. It's a wonderful opportunity for you to experience the message of Christ and the birth of Christ. We need many folks to actually be out there as cast and do things ahead of time too. So you can sign up at the welcome center, actually that other center there, or you can do it online. But we're hoping for great participation from our church and many in the community as well. Thank you so much for listening. God bless you. Hey, let's stand and worship the Lord together today.
So Jesus, we just thank you for your presence that is in this place. God, we just welcome you into our hearts and your church, and we just pray that you move in a mighty way. Just thank you, Lord, for what you're doing. And God, if there's something that we just need to lay down at your throne, Lord, help us to do that, reveal that to us, God. And yes, that you move in a new and fresh way. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Let's worship Jesus together. Sing this out. You came. You came to set the captives free. You came to bring the slippers to me. My sin and my rejection made your blood and my acceptance. Now I'm alive to bring new praise. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. Yes, he is. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. Every chain, every chain is broken through you, Jesus. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. We worship you, God. Whoa. Sing this together. Your blood has covered every sin. Your blood has covered every sin. Your greatest empowerment is in you. My pain, my pressure, my pain and my oppression. And your blood and my acceptance. Now I'm alive to bring new praise. Hey. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. Yes, he is. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. Every chain, every chain is broken through you, Jesus. So we say, where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. Where the speed of the Lord is, whoa. All right, let's sing this together. I'm free. I'm free. I'm free. I'm free to dance and sing. I'm free. I'm free. I'm free to shout it out. I'm free. I'm free. I'm free to dance and sing. I'm free. I'm free. I'm free to worship you. I'm gonna worship you. Come on, church. Where the speed of the Lord is. Sing this out. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. There is freedom in this place. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. Every chain, every chain is broken through you, Jesus. Where the speed of the Lord is, there is freedom. Yes, Lord. Whoa. Come on, let's lift up and shout and praise. Rock him, Jesus. Where the speed of the Lord is. Sing this again. Oma. Who am I that the highest could welcome? I was lost, but He brought me in with His love. Oh, oh, His love for me. Through the sunsets free, oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God, yes, I am. Free at last. The elastic is ransom, His grace comes. Now I was a slave to Jesus' dying. Oh. Yes, He died for me. Through the sunsets free, oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God, yes, I am. In my Father's house, in my Father's house. There's a place for me. I'm a child of God, yes, I am. I am chosen. I am chosen, not forsaken. I am who you say I am. You are for me, not against me. I am who you say I am. I'm chosen. I am chosen, not forsaken. I am who you say I am. You are for me, not against me. I am who you say I am. Oh, I am who you say I am. Through the sun, through the sunsets free, oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God, yes, I am. In my Father's house, in my Father's house. There's a place for me. I'm a child of God, yes, I am. In my Father's house, in my Father's house. There's a place for me. I'm a child of God, yes, I am. Let's lift it up, church. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. I hear the Savior say. I hear the Savior say. Thy strength, indeed a small child of weakness watching me. Finding me, thine all-in-all. 'Cause Jesus paid it all, all to Him, my own. Sin had left a crimson stain, He washed it by the snow. Thank you, Lord. Lord, now indeed. Lord, now indeed I find thy pardon. When thine alone can change the leopard's spurs. And melt the heart of stone. 'Cause Jesus paid it all, all to Him, my own. Sin had left a crimson stain, He washed it by the snow. And when before the throne. And when before the throne. I sang with my complete. Jesus started my soul to sing. My looks shall still repeat. 'Cause Jesus paid it all, all to Him, my own. Sin had left a crimson stain, He washed it by the snow. He washed it by the snow. He washed it by the snow. Praise the one. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt. Erase this life of love again. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt. Erase this life of love again. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt. Erase this life of love again. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt. Erase this life of love again. 'Cause Jesus paid it all, all to Him, my own. Sin had left a crimson stain, He washed it by the snow. He washed it by the snow. He washed it by the snow. So church, this next song that we're gonna sing is, it's called "The Blessing", and it comes from the Bible from Numbers, chapter 6. And it's this blessing that God's people, they would pray over their children and future generations. And does anyone here want the blessing of the Lord over their life, over their kids, over future kids? Yes, yes, we believe that today. So as we sing this, let's just declare that to God. The Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face shine upon you. Be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Let's sing that again. The Lord bless. The Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face shine upon you. Be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Amen. The Lord bless. The Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face shine upon you. Be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Amen. His favor be upon you in a thousand generations. For your family and your children, and their children, and their children. May His presence go before you and behind you and beside you, all around you and within you. He is with you. He is with you in the morning, in the evening, in the coming, in the going, in the weakening and rejoicing. He is for you. 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 May His favor, may His favor be upon you in a thousand generations. For your family and your children, and their children, and their children. May His presence go before you and behind you and beside you, all around you and within you. He is with you. He is with you in the morning, in the evening, in the coming, in the going, in the weakening and rejoicing. He is for you. 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 And amen. 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 Sing it out. Amen. 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 And amen. Through the sky. Jesus, we just pray for your blessing and your favor over our families, over our lives, over our children, over our future children, God. Lord, may your presence just invade our lives, Lord. May your presence invade this place, God. May you stir us to draw closer and deeper to you, God. May you stir us as those of us who are parents, God, to live as mentors, to live as a representation of what it means to live like Jesus, to live out of faith that our kids can look up to, God. And Lord, if we are a child, if we have parents here, God, may we live in such a way that it honors our parents, that it lifts them up, Lord. May we not be a burden on our parents, but may we be a blessing on our parents, God. We thank you for your presence that is here in this place, that is moving amongst us, God. We thank you, Lord, and we thank you for that blessing. Be with us now as we prepare our hearts to receive the word that you have for us. We thank you, God, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Let's give Jesus a round of applause in this place, church. Thank you. You may be seated.
We're gonna dismiss kids with Jonathan, so kids go. It's great to see kids in the house. It is an opportunity for me to thank the Lord. I think that I really feel like our two-service thing is working. The early service was fuller, probably in part because of Fall Back Sunday, but just really thanking the Lord. I just love that blessing song that we do, and it kind of brings tears to my eyes when I sing it, and there's just all kind of things rolling around in my heart. And so we're gonna have two ladies share a little bit today, and so this one is, she knows, but it's pretty spontaneous about a great testimony. The Scripture says that we overcome by the blood of the Lamb and the word of our testimony. So Lynn is gonna come and share a great testimony about what God did in Mike's life. And I told her to do it in a minute, and she said that she could. So come on, put your hands together, and put your hands together for her. And God really touching Mike, yeah.
First of all, I want to say thank you for everyone that has prayed for him this week. Sure. That Monday night, I took him into the hospital. He was having all kinds of chest pains. We thought, the doctor in the Reed City said he was having many heart attacks. And they sent him over to Big Rapids, wanted him to have a stress test. His EKGs in Reed City were all abnormal. Sent him over to Big Rapids, ended up doing a stress test. He failed the stress test. They then proceeded to send him to Grand Rapids. They said he was either, they needed to do a heart cath on him. And so we were down to Grand Rapids. He went in for the heart cath. And before, we had seen three actual heart doctors came in, and he said to, or they all said, there's three ways to fix this, either medication, stents, or open-heart surgery. And I said, okay. And the one doctor said, the first one, medication is out of the question. It's either stents or open-heart surgery. The next one come in said, we're looking at stents or open-heart surgery. And so then he went in for the heart cath, and the doctor and the anesthesiologist both had made bets that they were going to be doing open-heart surgery on him. And the nurse, one of them said three stents, one said two stents. And so I was like, okay. And I just, I knew everybody was praying. We were praying. I was a basket case, let me tell you. And the nurse come out, and my heart sunk after they had taken him back for the procedure. And I thought, oh my goodness, nurses don't come out and talk to you what's going on. And she come out and she said, you're gonna be amazed. And he did awesome. Absolutely no blockage, no stents, no open-heart surgery. Gave him a total clear 100% heart conditions after it. And I just praise God, and I know it was God that touched him.
Thank you, Lynn. God bless you guys. So keep praying for Mike, and we're super grateful for the touch of the Lord. And we sang that song, you know, "The Blessing of the Lord" on your family. I just really wanted you to hear that and rejoice with these guys, but also we can believe God to, whatever the need of your family is, God can move in that situation as well. Today, I'm gonna talk about what would Jesus say to the Minneapolis City Council, and I asked Jackie to come and share with us a little bit, and let's welcome her. And right after she shares, we're gonna roll a little video clip. My brother pastors in Minneapolis, so he brings a unique perspective with what happened with George Floyd, the rioting that followed, and Minneapolis City Council unanimously voting to defund the police. So we're gonna, boy, we're jumping into all of that today, and Jackie's gonna set the stage for us. So welcome her as she comes.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn. I just want to speak on a little bit about discrimination. Since we do live in a town where it's not prominent as much as it is everywhere else, we may not think about it as much. That's one of the reasons why we should be aware of it as a faith community, as a church of God. There are more and more people moving here from places where, you know, discrimination and hate is, you know, very everyday situation, and they may come here being hurt and having experienced that hate themselves. And we as a Christian body need to be aware of our character and our heart conditions, on how to, how to react to those. Being nice to someone can change their perspective. I had a situation with my husband. He experienced some discrimination from a guy. He said he didn't like black people, but he got to talking to him more, and he actually ended up liking him. He said he wasn't sure if they would be best friends, but they end up becoming acquaintances and things like that. But we do need to be aware of how we treat people, regardless of the situation we're in, they're in. Even if we're being hurt ourselves, we can't control anybody's actions, but we can control how we react to those. So that's the biggest thing about our reactions. So that's the biggest thing about our reactions. I am biracial. My mom's white, my dad's black, and I have experienced not too much discrimination myself as far as, you know, just directly, but I have experienced it as far as both in the black community and the white community of not being dark enough or black enough for either side, which is crazy. Right? Right? I've been asked, why am I this color? Because of my, right? So, but it is, it is a condition of the heart and how we react. I didn't, I've experienced it in a previous deployment of being called racial slurs. I don't take it offense, because I know it's that person's own experience or condition that they have to deal with, and they're just outwardly portraying it on someone else. But I did react in a great way. And from then forth, every time I seen that person, they've never disrespectful. They, you know, treated, treated me kindly, and they got the service that they deserved, and we got the respect that, you know, I deserve as well. But we need to be, we do need to treat people no matter what the situation is, no matter how we feel about it with respect, and we'll get that in return. It can change, it can put somebody on the path that we never even know, treating them right. And the world is ready for us Christians to show them who we are, and we should be ready to show them the Christ in us. And the world does say, kill them with kindness, but God says, love thy neighbor. So we should love thy neighbor. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for listening to God. My name is Mark Harper. I'm a pastor at a church here in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm a pastor of a church in Minnesota. My brother Pastor Scott asked me to make a video about my reaction to the George Floyd video, the riots that followed, and then the reaction of the city council afterwards. And so, of course, like many others, when I saw the video, I had two thoughts. One was just, we've seen these horrible videos in the past of unjust police shootings, and, you know, everything kind of gets lumped together, so, you know, some maybe were just, but certainly some were unjust, and the videos are horrific. But this one seemed to be the worst of them all, because it was a police officer in uniform with his knee on a man's neck, a black man's neck, and killing a man in slow motion. And the feeling that I had as I watched it, it felt like, almost like a lion in the safari that was proud of his prey, proud of his death, if you will. And it just gave me this, this feeling, this horrible feeling, not only for black men, but just for society, for our culture. And the feeling that I had is, this is really, really scary, because the bad guys are in charge. My second reaction is, okay, this is not good for Minneapolis. Not only did this happen, but this happened in my city, Minneapolis, and this was the, at least the second situation like this. And so, I was thinking, what's gonna happen? There's gonna be some civil unrest. The last thing I expected was riots. But we had a planned trip going up north to the North Shore Lake Superior, a city called Lutzen, for vacation. And so, we headed up north, like, I think that same day maybe that that happened. And it was really, really scary watching the news reports and watching my city burn. Now, I live in Minneapolis. You know, I grew up in, like Scott, I grew up in the city of Detroit, or suburb of Detroit. And I remember vividly the '67 riots and watching the city burn then, and how the riots destroyed the city of Detroit, and it never recovered. I remember growing up as a teenager, and everybody was afraid to go south of Eight Mile. Everybody was afraid to go into the city of Detroit. So if you did go, it was to see a concert at Cobble Hall, or to see the Tigers play at Tiger Stadium, and you always had this little bit of fear about you going into Detroit. Well, Minneapolis was not that way. Minneapolis was, all these little ethnic communities, and yeah, we had our problems, but just, you know, cultural restaurant after cultural restaurant, great coffee shops. And we spent a lot of time, it's one of my favorite things to do, kind of go corner to corner, all these little subcultures within the city. And so, watching the city burn, and watching the police basically vacate and kind of throw up the white flag, and leave the precinct, and watching buildings burn, and the fire department not show up, because the fire department is afraid. And basically, for several days there, our leaders failed. Our leaders failed, first of all, because they didn't make a quick arrest. They failed because they didn't understand the, what they were up against. And basically, Minneapolis became the focus of the anger and rage of the nation. So we had extreme groups on both the left and the right that came into our city that didn't belong here, that stirred things up, that set buildings on fire, that busted windows. And so, that was really, really scary to watch a lot of that, people from outside our city come into our city and basically burn our city. And the wounds are still there. I think there's, you know, over 100 businesses that went out of business that haven't, and many of these were ethnic businesses. And then, but I think perhaps the most like confounding thing was the reaction of the Minneapolis City Council when they came out a few days later. And ironically, we were actually at the George Floyd memorial, my family was, when I heard from one of these, you know, kind of video internet reporters, I heard them say on camera, if you will, watching them film, that the city, Minneapolis City Council voted unanimously to defund the police department. Wasn't totally sure what those words meant, but that was not, those were not good words. It's like, really? Like, didn't what just happened show you that we needed a strong, you know, what got the city back to order after three days of riots was a strong show of law and order, if you will. And so, thankfully, pretty much all the members of the city council have been backpedaling on that. They had public meetings in North Minneapolis, which is kind of the low-income part of Minneapolis, and residents were outraged. Here's the thing, the residents didn't want to defund the police. They knew what that meant for them, and basically, one of them kind of summed it up, saying, saying this, "Bad police are bad for a neighborhood, but good police are good for a neighborhood." So the answer isn't defunding the police. The answer is figuring out a way, if we get a bad cop, if we get a racist cop, how do we get rid of that bad cop, so that the people that are enforcing justice, if you will, in our communities are righteous and just people that want justice and want righteousness?
Thanking Jackie for sharing with us. Didn't she do a great job, Jackie? Thank you. Thank you. And thanking my brother Mark for sharing with us as well. I think he brings a unique perspective, pastoring in Minneapolis, and really indebted to Jackie sharing with us. So that light is really bright, that one right there. Yeah, thank you. So, we're talking about what would Jesus say to the Minneapolis City Council, and I think both Jackie and my brother kind of set up leading into it really well for us. We're going to the story of the Good Samaritan. You can look at in your sermon notes, it'll be on the screen as well. And I want to kind of lead into it with two little things that happened in recent weeks. And one was watching the Spring Arbor University Chapel when Jasmine was home for a little bit, she's a student there. And I believe it was Lisa who said, hey, let's watch chapel with Jasmine, that so much is kind of virtual now. And so, we watched the chapel, and the speaker said something that I absolutely loved, that I frankly haven't heard anybody, although Jackie came really close to kind of saying exactly the same thing, which was cool. But I haven't heard folks talking about it too much, which is that racism is a symptom and not the cause, and that it's a symptom of a heart condition, of the brokenness of our heart. And so, there's all this focus on how do we solve racism? And clearly, you know, there's, there is racism that is out there, but if it's, if it's seen as the cause of all the ills of the society, then it misses the whole point that it is a symptom. And the second kind of thing I want to lead out with, so we had our missionary Tyler Halsted here, he's going to Egypt. I love that he married a Vietnamese girl, and they're going to Egypt, which is just kind of a melting pot of ethnicities in the story. And so, he and I kayaked on Five Lakes on Monday, and just talking to him and saying, and I knew that he had gone to North Central, which is where the riots, you know, North Central is, North Central University is downtown Minneapolis, and so, so I'm asking questions. And he offered that he had seen, he had seen some evidence of racist interaction among police in particular, but that that was the, you know, the exception to the thing. And so, we're going back and forth, and I say, well, you know, I've always looked at it like, love people, you know, all of God's children, and don't focus on race and this kind of thing, and then, but now, many are saying, no, you, you need to focus on the race, and you need to make it right, and you need to, and then, he kind of looked at me and he said, "It's all about the hope of Jesus in the cross." And he kind of, he said that, and he looks at me, and he's looking at me to see how I will react, and I'm like, yes, you're right. And that it's a symptom and not the cause. And so, we jump into it. May we have soft hearts. So look at, look at your notes and look at the screen as well. The first thing to say is, love God with everything. Let's say that together. Love God with everything. So I might, I possibly gonna be a little bit edgy for some people today, and that is by design, because I want you to think about it and talk about it, and I welcome talking to anyone after service or later, and if you're thinking about it and talking about it, then I think that's really cool. So look at Luke 10:25. On one occasion, an expert in the law stood up, noticed, to test Jesus, saying, "Teacher," he asked, "What must I do to inherit eternal life? What is written in the law?" He replied, "How do you read it?" You've got to love Jesus' response here, because he goes back to loving God and neighbor. He answered, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your strength, and with all your mind, and love your neighbor as yourself." And so, basically, Jesus responding to him that it's the evidence of the changed life in the heart that goes out to our hands to raise our, you know, surrender to God, and our hands uplifted, and love our neighbor with our hands as well, that there'll be a change from the inside out that happens. Now, he's quoting from Deuteronomy, and I just love that blessing song that Jonathan led us in today, and my youngest daughter Jasmine kind of shared it with our family as a blessing for Lisa's birthday on March 24th, which is when the state of Michigan shut down. And so, for me, it's all kind of tied together. But this was kind of put in my heart as we sang it today, that I had my hand stretched out to you, because the Lord blessed you, and causes face to shine upon you. And there was this sense powerfully that God wants to stir in His love, the blessing of God on all of our families. And so, here, Jesus is quoting from Deuteronomy 6:4, and this is one of those great sections, this is called the shema, and the Orthodox Jews, they'll still do it today, they wear flakteries on the wrist and on the forehead that have the shema and a couple other verses that are kind of saying, you know, this is what it boils down to, what we're supposed to do as followers. So, Deuteronomy 6:4, "Hear, O Israel, the Lord our God, the Lord is one. Love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your strength." These commandments that I give you today are to be upon your hearts. Impress them on your children. And when I read that, it's a convicting thing to me, because I ask myself, how am I doing with that? And may, may I grow in impressing them on your children? Talk about them when you sit at home, and when you walk along the road, and when you lie down, and when you get up. It's kind of saying to us that all of life is to be an avenue to instill the things of God into all of our family. And what an awesome thing that is. And so, Jesus kind of drills down on it, and then notice the description here, "Tie them as symbols on your hands, and bind them on your foreheads, write them on the doorframes of your houses, and upon your gates." And I wonder, you know, there's this Tuesday election, right? And may we be a neighbor to the person that we disagree with and that votes opposite of us. If the one you vote for wins, be a neighbor to the person who voted opposite of you. If the one you vote for loses, be a neighbor to the person who votes opposite of you. And if, like some folks, you see some spiritual warfare in the situation, remember that we wrestle not against flesh and blood, right? That no person is to ever be viewed as our enemy. The second is, avoid the temptation to want to justify. And the thing about a statement like that is, right away, we can go to people that we know who want to justify themselves. If you're pointing the finger at the justifier, then four are pointing back at me. I think everybody on the planet wants to justify themselves. And so, may we keep a soft heart before him, but this is what the lawyer wants to do. "You have answered correctly," Jesus replied, "do this, and you will live." But he wanted to justify himself. And so, he asked Jesus, "Who is my neighbor?" So the geography of the question is that in Jesus' community, it would, most people would not travel more than about a dozen miles from their house, and you would interface with people who were very much like you. And so, if you were a serious Jew, you were kind of running with other serious Jews and not really, and so, the lawyer's saying, "I want to love people like me, but I want to get off the hook for loving folks that aren't like me." He wants to limit the love of God. This is a serious thing that he's saying. And so, we understand about the love of God, that in Romans 8, Paul writes, "That nothing will separate us from the love of God," tribulation, famine, distress, persecution, that whole list that is there. So loving is messy sometimes. Loving folks is messy sometimes. So who is my neighbor? I think a better question, a better statement, we see among the psalmist in Psalm 133 in verse 23, "Search me, O God, and know my heart; test me, and know my anxious thoughts; see if there is any offensive way in me." I love Jackie's story about her husband reaching out to, by getting to know each other. They, basically, the racism on the part of the one who didn't like black folks, that was put aside to some extent in their acquaintances now. So that's, that's, that's kind of going at it, saying, "Let me be a healer, let me respond in a situation like Jesus would. See if there's any offensive way in me." And in that case, that her husband's friend had the offensive way, right? 1 Corinthians 11, so if you're like me, anytime you receive communion, you become aware that there's stuff that God is working on in my heart, right? And so, this is a communion verse, "A man ought to examine himself before he eats of the bread and drinks of the cup; for anyone who eats and drinks without recognizing the body of the Lord eats and drinks judgment on himself." Or John 8:7, which could be written to any of us who kind of have the heart of an accuser. But Jesus bent down, so the woman caught in sin, right? The woman caught in the act of adultery. Jesus bent down, started right in the ground with his finger. When they kept on questioning him, he straightened up and said, "If any of you is without sin, let him be the first to throw a stone at her." And you have to love that. I knew one pastor that had a stone on his desk with the word "first" on it. And so, anyone who came with that kind of judgmental spirit, he'd just hand him the stone. That's a good way to look at it. But avoid the temptation to want to justify. I think that's the human condition. Check your heart. So Jesus begins now to tell what we know as the story of the Good Samaritan. So Jesus begins now to tell what we know as the story of the good Samaritan. And a couple of things about the story. So geographically, he's, the, the, the road to Jericho drops an incredibly amount of elevation over about an 18 mile journey. We also know that the Bible says that the Jews have no dealings with Samaritans, so much so that Jesus passes through Samaria in the story of the woman at the well. He's intentionally trying to bust through the barriers that are there. And so there was this animosity, this hatred between the Jews and the Samaritans that had to do with the fact that Jews believed the Samaritans basically, uh, bailed, uh, in the Assyrian captivity that happens. And so there was generations and actual centuries of anger toward the two groups. So that's kind of a backdrop to what he says next. But I want to stress here, "Check your heart." We're gonna see three approaches to life, three ways to live your life among the actors in the story. So verse 30, in reply, Jesus said, "The man was going down from Jerusalem to Jericho when he fell into the hands of robbers." Notice that the robbers are plural. When Lisa and I were a couple, I remember, uh, being in Frankenmuth of all places. And I don't know, a group of stupid teenagers were sort of shouting things at her. And I was like, "Rrrr," you know, so I was gonna, uh, and they, they scattered like a bunch of nanny goats, man. Um, but my point is there's something about the plural, uh, the, so, so, you know, to, to be besieged upon by robbers, plural. "They stripped him of his clothes, beat him, and went away, leaving him half-dead." A priest happened to be going down the same road. And when he saw the man, he passed by on the other side. It makes you wonder, did he, did they have to step to the other side so to not trip over the man? So to a Levite, when he came to the place where he saw him pass by on the other side, but a Samaritan. And here's where the story is kind of fascinating because remember, there's all this animosity between the Jews and the Samaritans. So, so the Jews hearing the story, "Oh, here comes a Samaritan." Well, he's just gonna, he's gonna step on him and, and, and finish the work that the robbers left. He's gonna kill him all the way now. So that's the buildup. That's the tension that Jesus is going for in the story. But a Samaritan, I think that, that Jewish moms would see the Samaritans and, and say bad things about them to their children. And the other way too. They whisper in hushed tones about one another. So generational centuries of all this stuff. But a Samaritan, as he traveled, came to where the man was. And when he, not walking by on the other side, but he saw him. He saw him. I remember being on the streets of New York. And, uh, there, we, we were, a bunch of us young guys were doing Bible, a vacation Bible school at a church on Long Island. And we were kind of out on the streets. And here came this homeless lady. You could smell her before you could see her. Um, and she'd scream and the, the sidewalk would just scatter every which way. And she screamed and she, she ran. And everybody scattered and then she ran this way and ran that way. My point is, um, I, I, I honestly, I wish I had a better ending to what I did in the story because I saw her too and she screamed and kind of ran on by me. Um, but I think most folks would just rather not see the homeless screaming lady or the one that is lying by the side of the road. We'd just rather not see him. "When he saw him, he took pity on him." So I'm gonna jump into the deep end here a little bit. And I'm, I'm gonna ask you to journey with me into the deep end and some of the thoughts I'm gonna make here. Because remember, there's this centuries old animosity between Jew and Samaritan. I'm a, I'm a conservative. I follow, uh, conservative folks. Um, if Jesus told the story to a group of conservatives, um, I think the Samaritan might be an Antifa member. Just think about that for a second. And if your reaction to that is, "No way, no way, that would not happen. The Antifa person would not stop and help the blind, the, the lame man, the wounded man, dying man on the side of the road." The thing of the story, and that's exactly how the Jews felt, by the way, hearing that it was a Samaritan who stopped. The thing about the story is it doesn't really tell us if the Samaritan was a godly, good man who stumbles on this Jew lane on the side of the road and helps him, or if he changed in the moment. And I think we have to have our hearts and minds open to the grace of God, to people changing in the moment, particularly those that we disagree with. What if Jesus spoke at the Black Lives Matter gathering? I think the Samaritan would be part of the Klan. And again, folks would say, "No way, that's not possible. That, there's no way that the Klansmen would do that." But let me just back up with you a moment. So, um, there's a great movie that was put out, um, Best of Enemies, I want to say. And it's in my little note that I left laying there. So let me make sure that I get the exact name of the movie right. Best of Enemies. And so there's this Klansman, Grand Cyclops of Durham, North Carolina, which why they go Cyclops, I have no idea. Klansman, C.P. Ellis. He was asked to be on the, the integration, or school desegregation, rather, community project in 1971 with Ann Atwater, who's this African-American young lady, civil rights activist type. You picture that together. This is part of the committee. God so worked through her that he changed him and softened his heart. And, and they became lifelong friends. And so much so that a movie's made about a best of enemies. And then he becomes a vocal supporter of the late Dr. Martin Luther King. And so the thing of it is that God can change everyone and anyone. And he changed you and he changed me. So if we look at it like God can't change them, um, let's just not go there at all. And so we said there are three worldviews and there are three perspectives in the world. And the robber has the view, "What's yours is mine and I'm gonna take it." My brother talked about the riots in Minneapolis and, and, uh, 140 cities have seen riots, looting and burning. Uh, this, this can't be the Lord's way. But I wonder, do we need to be the church? Do we need to be representatives of Jesus more to touch those that are hurting, uh, and, and, and burning cities? The second, the priest and the Levite show, "What's mine is mine and I'm gonna keep it. I'm gonna, gonna stop." The Samaritan looked and saw the man, the priest and the Levite, they passed by on the other side. It's the ultimate example of apathy and complacency. James 4:17, it says, "Anyone then who knows good, the good that he ought to do and doesn't do, it sins." And I, can I, can I just say that, um, around race in particular, it's, I don't think it's good enough for us to say, "I'm not a racist." I feel like people want us to show it in real time, in the moment, where there's a particular situation that could be perceived that way. Uh, bring the love of Jesus to the situation. Just putting that out there for you. Remember I said I was gonna be a little bit edgy today? I think that's a good thing. It makes you wonder, did the priest, what, was he preparing a message on verses like this? Proverbs 31:8, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute; speak up for the, and judge fairly; defend the rights of the poor and needy." As he passed by on the other side, was he going to deliver that verse to the folk he was gonna teach? Or perhaps it was Proverbs 24:10, "If you falter in times of trouble, how small is your strength? Rescue those being led to way to death and hold back those staggering toward slaughter. If you say, 'We knew nothing about this,' does not he who weigh the hearts perceive it?" The Samaritan saw, he listened, he entered in. Edmund Burke said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good people to do nothing." The Samaritan shows us the view, "What's mine is yours and I'm gonna share it." And so he provides for him. And I'm not necessarily gonna, well, we'll, we'll jump in and read this little section from, from Acts 2 on the day of Pentecost. So the birthday of the church is Easter along with the day of Pentecost. There's kind of two birthdays. But notice the description of day of Pentecost. Now, they were staying in Jerusalem. "God fearing Jews from every nation under heaven. When they heard the sound, a crowd came together in bewilderment because each of them heard them speaking in his own language. Utterly amazed, they asked, 'Are not these all the men who are speaking Galileans? How is it that each of us hears them in his own native tongue? Parthians, Medes, Elamites, residents of Mesopotamia, Judea, Capodocia, Pontus, Asia, uh, Pergia and Pamphylia, Egypt and parts of Libya near Cyrene.'" So they're, they're speaking in prayer language of folks that are hearing them in their own language and they're from all over the world. So God chooses, God follows up Easter with the day of Pentecost by bringing his spirit poured out on all different ethnicities. And there's some 15 that are named here. That's kind of the, the Samaritan thing, that what's mine is yours and I'm gonna share it. Or that the Samaritan is being a barrier buster in reaching out over centuries of animosity and hatred and being the neighbor to the man. He saw him. We sang today, "Every chain broken through you, Jesus. Let's be among those who facilitate the breaking of the chain." The fourth is that he went to him, well, let's back up. The fourth thing to stress is he poured in the oil and the wine. Isn't that great? And so both have healing qualities. And, and the wine representing like we receive in communion, we receive the Lord's supper, right? So it represents the blood of Jesus. The oil representing the, the Holy Spirit, he pours in bold. Verse 34, "He went to him and bandaged his wounds, pouring in the oil and the wine." I don't think he does any of this unless he sees him. We tend to sometimes not want to see the need that's out there. Then he put the man on his own donkey, took him to an inn and took care of him. And the next day, he took out two silver coins and gave them to the innkeeper. Look after him, he said, "And when I return, I will reimburse you for any extra expenses that you may have." So there's, all of what he's doing is sharing to bless the man, to meet the need of the dying man. And he, and he literally saves his life. What a wonderful and awesome thing. I think the rioting and looting is a symptom of the condition of the heart. I think racism that we see in the culture is a symptom of the condition of the heart. And what is needed then is the hope that we have in Jesus. And so is Jeremiah talking about me? When he says, "The heart is deceitful above all things and beyond cure, and you can understand it?" Yes. If I'm not yielded to Jesus, that's the perfect description of me and it is of you too. Or is he talking about, Moses talking about us? When he says, "Pre-flood, the Lord saw how great man's wickedness on the earth had become, and every inclination of the thoughts of his heart was only evil all the time." Think about yourself before knowing Jesus. Or maybe a season in life where you wandered way off the straight and narrow. And think if that doesn't describe where you went. And I think the tug is there for us to constantly go after what the scripture says. The, "Every inclination of the thoughts of his heart was only evil all the time." The culture says, "No, we're born good. We're basically good. We're gonna create heaven on earth." It's not a biblical view. The final thing to stress, and I know I've been pretty strong today. I felt strong about the things that I was sharing. Go and do likewise. And you have to love that. Luke 10:36, "Which of the three do you think was a neighbor to the man who fell into the hands of the robber?" Even in this moment, the lawyer who wants to test him and justify himself, Jesus is reaching out to him that he would repent and come to faith in Christ. The expert in the law, he still is the expert in the law, the one who had mercy on him. And so Jesus is inviting him to go past your small world, 12 miles from outside of your house. Be willing to connect with those that are different and be a neighbor to them. Jesus told them, told him, "Go and do likewise." We step back from the story. Maybe that's part of the reason why that song, "The Lord bless you and keeps you, keep you and causes face to shine upon you, and over and over, he is for you, he is for you, he is for you." We step back from the story a little bit and think of it over the centuries of time, the thousands of years that have gone by. Who is the wounded dying man really? It's me. That's the thing. And it's you. And when we look at it that way, Jesus is the Samaritan. And Jesus is the one that crosses all, all, over all the stuff and reaches out to us with his healing power and his grace and mercy. When Lisa shared the great news that teen child is coming to be with us in two weeks, I broke out in cheers because of my story. Or the brother that you saw in the video clip who pastors in Minneapolis was a teenage drug dealer that I partied with back in the day. Wasn't yesterday. But Jesus broke through and saved us. We were the wounded dying men laying on the side of the road and Jesus saved us. So what is your go and do likewise thing? What is your likewise choice? What is your likewise moment? I think human nature is to surround ourselves with folks like us who think like us and act like us. And, and, uh, really the gospel runs opposite of that, challenging us to reach out and, and, and be the Samaritan, reach across and realize with a deep sense of gratitude that, that I was the dying man and Jesus reached out to me. So may we have that deep gratitude. I want us to believe God that the next time that you have an opportunity to reach out to a neighbor, do it. The next time there's an opportunity to talk to someone who voted different than you, do it with the grace and love of Jesus. The next time there's an opportunity to strike back against racism in any form, be like the Samaritan, go and do likewise. God will really bless it. I think there's a huge opportunity for the church. Remember what my missionary friend said, going to Egypt? "The only hope is in the cross." He's not saying a new thought, but somehow his passion about it struck me in a really powerful way. And so ultimately it's, it's not the White House. It's the Holy Spirit resting on his house. See? It ultimately has the answer. I'm not criticizing any politician. I'm saying that, uh, may we go and do likewise with the hope in the presence of Jesus. Will you stand your feet with me, please, today? And bow our heads before him. Will you bow your heads with me in the moment? Can you just in your own way begin to pray and call on the Lord? And all of us, we're the dying man laying on the side of the road. And Jesus is the Samaritan who came to us. And you say, "I know that I need to get right with him and I know I haven't been where I need to be." And maybe you gave your heart to the Lord 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago, last night. And maybe you never have. The Bible says that he that believes in the name of the Son of God has assurance that he has eternal life. And so you know... And so, you know that God's tugging at your heart to get right with him. Just lift up a hand high in the house, and I need to get right with Jesus. Yes. I just want to lead us in inviting Christ to come to our hearts now. Can you repeat this prayer with me? Dear Jesus, I know I mess up sometimes, and I need you. Please forgive my sin, Lord. Help me to follow you, guide my each step. Others here today, you want to see the broken on the side of the road, and you want to choose to not justify yourself. You know what the Samaritan didn't say? "I didn't rob him. I didn't do that to him. It's not my problem, it's not my fault." He saw him and compassion. He poured in the oil and the wine. America needs a spirit of healing. America needs folk that will speak the truth in love. America needs prayerful people that are calling on Jesus to heal the land. Standing for righteousness, yes, but you don't have to choose between standing for righteousness and pouring in the oil and the wine. Lord, let me be among those who see the wounded on the side of the road and pouring the oil and the wine. Lift a hand high, that's your heart's cry in the house today. Just believe in God to touch us. Others here today, God wants to speak to you about a go and do likewise moment, taking that stand. And notice in the story, the Samaritan was the only one who helped the man. He stood alone, and he risked his life alone, because the robbers were plural, they may have still been there. You want to respond in obedience to God in your go and do likewise moment, to do what the Lord would have you to do, and you're just asking for courage and for strength to honor him. So, Lord, help me with the go and do likewise. Lift up a hand high in the house, that's your heart's cry. I want to pray for us, and we have this little election, and I want to pray for us, and I just want to conclude by praying at the altars. I call it the little election, I guess that's a little bit of hyperbole. But I want to pray for us, and then if it's on your heart to pray at these altars, to kneel at your seat, please do so, and we just want to cry out to God. Father, we cry out to you, Lord God, and so many of your people saying, "Lord, may we pour in the oil and the wine, may we see the wounded man lying by the side of the road, and be like Jesus pouring in the oil and the wine." It's a symbol of the blood of Jesus and the power of the Holy Spirit. I mean, the church lead out with those things in the culture in which you're in, the blood of Jesus and the power of the Holy Spirit. We pray always that you would give us the courage to step over whatever barriers are there that have been created by humankind. May we step over them with grace and the mercy of Jesus, and, Lord, may we not wait for the other to make, take that first step and make the initiative, but may we do so. Pouring in the oil and the wine. And, Lord God, we also pray over those go and do likewise moments. They are many in our lives. The Samaritans stood alone, and we pray, God, that you would give us the courage to speak up for you, Lord, with holy righteousness, but also with godly humility, Lord God, and to strike that balance, to touch the hearts of people. Lord, maybe it's an act of service, maybe it's, Lord, driving someone to their doctor visit. Lord, maybe it's hugging the recent divorcee. Maybe it's not treating a COVID-positive person like a leper, Lord God, but realizing that they're God's child too. Lord God, we pray, let us step into the go and do likewise moments with grace and love and mercy and care. And Father, we pray over this election, God. God, we're just crying out to you that folks would vote biblical values, Lord God, and stir us, and so we cry out to you, we pray your blessing. And Church, I just encourage you to take a moment and make a posture prayer. You can come to these altars, you can kneel at your seat, you can stay at your seat, and I think Jonathan's gonna lift that song to us, but let's just pray over this week, this election. Let's pray and cry out to him. Father, we cry out to you, and we pray your blessing, Lord God. Lord, that you would stir us, Lord God, that folks would be prayerful. Lord, we pray over our leaders, Lord God. We pray for our president, for our senators, congressmen, for our governor. You said to pray first for those that are in authority. God, may they have godly counsel, may they have godly people around them, may they have people of confidence and excellence and insight. And, Lord God, we pray for a healing of the land, Lord God, and we cry out to you for your best blessing. Lord, we believe you, in Jesus' name. Let's just lift that blessing song, friends, and we'll sing about two minutes, and we'll be done. God bless you.
(Singing) Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face shine upon you. Be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Amen.